Objections. We'll go ahead and start the study session at six o'clock. Council Study Session, March 13th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. With that, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you and take us to the next item, which will be the Hub Shopping Center, if I'm correct.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we're excited to share a project that city staff have been working with a development team from Tri-Land on over the last several months. We've reached a point where it's appropriate for the council to hear that presentation and begin to understand all the components of it as it makes its way through the review and approval process. So tonight, I'll ask, I believe, Richard Doobie and his team, as appropriate, to come up and speak with you and share their exciting project idea with you.
First, I can introduce myself to you. I'm Richard.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for...can you hear me okay with this?
You may want to just bring it down a little bit, so it's...
How about now? Better?
Can you hear back here? Go ahead.
Better? Okay, all right. So, thank you very much for seeing us, and my name is Richard Doobie, and I'm the owner of a company that is proposing the redevelopment of the Hub Shopping Center. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about us, about myself, the company, what we're planning to do with the center, and then John Hanson back here from IRR is going to walk through the numbers that we have shared with some of the people on the staff and that we plan to share with you tonight. So, I'll make this brief, and how do I move this thing? Oh, okay, thanks. All right, so this is us, 44 years in business, based in Chicago, privately held. I own 100% of the stock, and we're a full-service shopping center redevelopment company. We've done over 50 shopping centers in the Midwest, Kansas City, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Milwaukee, Chicago, Indianapolis. We've invested about $670 million over that timeframe, and we have acquisitions, leasing, capital markets, finance, full service. 90% of our projects are always done with a supermarket, and these are some of the companies that we've dealt with over the years. And we've done four other deals here in Kansas City. We've done Cherokee South, which is where I've met Adam when he was in Overland Park. We did 10 Quavera Plaza at Shawnee Mission Parkway and 10-Q. That was with a Price Chopper. A small center at 127th and Merlin in Olathe, and we did a deal in Blue Springs on Highway 7 and 40.
Could you speak a little more into the microphone?
I'll try. How about that? Where are we going with this? Oh, that's much better. Thank you so much. That works. Appreciate that. Okay, sorry. So, this is our project at 95th and Antioch in Overland Park. On the left side is what this project looked like. It was also about 50 years old, which is similar to what the Hub is, and on the right is what we did in Overland Park. This next slide is of a Price Chopper anchored center in Shawnee Mission Parkway, and that was with the Ball family. The project here in Independence is with the McEver family. So, the project was built in 1972. It's almost 50 years old, or a little more than 50 years old. It started off as a Woolco department store, then a Walmart, and then it became the Price Chopper store. The Firestone was built in 1990, and Burger King also built in 90. The property is about 160,000 feet, consists of primarily three buildings, and it's sitting on about 16 acres of land. There's a picture of an existing site plan. So, on the right is the Price Chopper and the Advanced Auto Store, all the way over on the right, and on the left is Oak Street Health, which is the newest addition to the project. It was brought in shortly after we bought it. We purchased the Hub in February of '22 and started to work with the staff here sometime in the spring of...pardon me, in the early summer, in the fall of '22. This next slide is what the project looks like today. The vacant parcel of land closest to the intersection of 291 and 23 is the new Price Chopper, made the new QuickTrip, which is almost fully built and planning to open in April. A big addition for us, helpful to us in terms of cleaning up the entire corner. And here's what we see for the future of the Hub. So, we're going to completely renovate the facades, replace the roofs, organize the traffic flow. It's kind of a free-for-all out there right now. Add new high-impact landscaping, new shopping center identification signs, and there'll be four new outlot buildings built on the project, and we're going to demolish about 17,000 feet of buildings to make way for that. So, here's what the site plan will look like when it is fully developed. The Price Chopper store is obviously the large block that's sitting in there. The yellow buildings represent the new out parcels that will be built, and the area highlighted in blue is the portion of the Price Chopper building that will be demolished, which is about 17,000 feet. There'll be a 17,000-foot tenant next to that, and then the Price Chopper store, which will be reduced in size from its current 104,000 square feet to approximately 70,000 square feet. And this will give you, excuse me, a little bit of an idea of how that works. So, the top arrow represents what the building and what they occupy today. The middle arrow is what they actually run the store in. So, they rent the top arrow, they run the store, and what is the middle arrow, and the lower arrow is what they're going to operate the store in when we're done with this renovation. So, this is a contemporary-sized facility. The store is way too big for what it is today, built almost 30 years ago, and it was, at the time, the right configuration. It's not today. And then the lower level gives you some idea of the lower picture of how the project will look versus how it looks in the picture above it. And I'll bring you through some visuals here that'll show this a little clearer. Here's how we see the project looking when we're done. So, the Price Chopper is again reduced in size, and there's a tenant on the end. The two buildings you can see in the background, and we repositioned the Burger King building on this particular view of the property, and they're working with us as we speak now to do that, demolish what they have there now and reposition the entire building. These are some of the concepts that we are developing construction plans for as we speak. We're about 40% done with getting these plans drawn so that we can get them out into the market and understand the pricing of this project sooner rather than later. And these are just some other views. Burger King repositioned. This is looking from 23rd Street to the south. You can see the two new buildings on 23rd Street along with a view of the center. This is the Dollar Tree store that exists now, just to the south. This is the Oak Street Health side of the center and what it will look like. And here's what the renovation will do from our perspective, aside from increasing the appearance. It'll create a more appealing appearance, obviously, in an environment. It'll attract new tenants. It'll attract new customers. It'll provide additional businesses for which to shop, and those businesses will generate increased sales tax and real estate taxes to the projects. So, at this point, we'll take you through the numbers. John Hanson is going to do that to give you an idea of what we're positioning or what we're suggesting to position financially in the project.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate that. Mayor, members of the council, and staff, my name is John Hanson. I'm with IRR Corporate and Public Finance with offices at 1901 West 47th Place in Westwood, Kansas. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. I'll run through some of the financial aspects of the proposal that we have before you this evening. So, in total, the vision that Rich just laid out for the redevelopment, comprehensive redevelopment of the Hub Shopping Center would be $37 million, and that includes all private investment in the shopping center redevelopment. We anticipate about $11 million of that $37 million to come from tenants and other parties other than the developer, who will invest in their own space and be a part of that redevelopment, leaving about $26 million for the developer to be investing in the project themselves. There is an estimated net operating income generated from the redeveloped center as fully stabilized with the new pad sites, all the components that Rich just described of 1.37 million, and that leaves an otherwise unfinancable return of 5.3% on the shopping center. That 5.3% is calculated as 1.37 million of net operating income divided by the 26 million of net development cost of the developer. In today's market, we believe a financeable return for the project is approximately 10%, leaving a $12 million gap to solve. Starting last fall, we started meeting with staff, talking about the vision for the project, and talking about the challenge, the gap that we have to financing the project. We brought to them last fall scenario number one, which was a full statutory TIF, which calls for 100% pilots, 50% eats, a transportation development district, a community improvement district, and a sales tax exemption on construction materials. We discussed this with staff. It was a little bit beyond the city's policy with respect to TIF, and so staff challenged us to go back to the drawing board and look at some other options, and I'll run you through these other scenarios and kind of what the pros and cons of each of those are, tell you what we're proposing this evening with respect to the financing structure, and why we think it might make sense both for the project and for the city and other taxing jurisdictions. As I mentioned, scenario number one is the full statutory TIF, 100% pilots, 50% economic activity taxes, a 1% transportation development district sales tax, and a 1% CID sales tax along with a sales tax exemption on construction materials. That solved our financial gap of $12 million, and importantly, it created capacity from the incentives that we could utilize in the project. As you know, TIF, TDD, and CID each have statutory requirements for what the money can be spent on, and we have to very carefully consider those in light of the budget that we have for the project, and indeed, the scenario that we presented last fall worked. However, staff challenged us, and as we met with other taxing jurisdictions like the school district, for example, they did not like that our proposal exceeded the city's economic development policy of having a 50-50% TIF. In addition, we know that the city has been challenged by the use of TIF in certain situations, and we were sensitive to that, so we went back to the drawing board and evaluated a second scenario. The second scenario utilized tax abatement as opposed to TIF, utilized a sales tax rebate as opposed to TIF economic activity taxes, but still used a TDD, CID, and sales tax exemption on materials. This eliminated the TIF request and used other tools beyond TIF, but the problem was that not using TIF required us to spend more dollars in conformance with the TDD and CID statutes, and that did not allow us to fully finance the gap. So, we had about a $3.6 million gap in trying to use a tax abatement strategy for the project. So, we refined. We met with staff, talked with them about that, and then presented a third compromise scenario, if you will, that brought our request fully in line with the city's economic development policy. So, as opposed to 100% pilots, we dropped that to 50% pilots, 50% eats, and retained the TDD, CID, and sales tax exemption components. That solved our gap. That created an incentive capacity that we could spend based on the budgeted dollars for the project, and importantly, brought the request in line with the city's economic development policy. It still utilizes that acronym, TIF, but as I'll present in a moment, I think that it makes a lot of sense for the city, and we hope that our proposal here, the magnitude of the proposal, the percentage of the project that utilizes TIF, will, upon looking at the entire proposal, look reasonable to the city as well. So, let's talk through what some of the advantages of that include. First and foremost, the proposal to use TIF does not call for the City of Independence to be responsible for any debt service associated with the financing of the project. TIF is a tool that will first and foremost freeze the tax base to the city and to all other taxing jurisdictions for property taxes and sales taxes. So, what is being currently generated by the Hub will continue to go to the taxing jurisdictions. What our proposal does with a 50% pilots and eats proposal is share the incremental property and sales taxes on a dollar-for-a-dollar basis, so 50% to the city, 50% to the project, or in the cases of property taxes, 50% to the taxing jurisdiction, 50% to the project. So, that taxing jurisdictions are held with no redevelopment exactly where they are today, but as we redevelop and generate new revenues, then there's a sharing between the project and the taxing jurisdictions. But with respect to the City of Independence, the City of Independence will not be responsible for any of the debt service on the financing. There won't be any payment risk associated with the TIF or any of the other tools to the City of Independence, and we won't be asking the City of Independence to guarantee revenues. We're simply asking that if we're able to execute the vision that Rich and Tri-Land would like to for the project, that those tools are made available, and those revenues are made available to reimburse eligible costs for the project. We are asking that bonds be issued for the project based on the TIF, TDD, and CID revenue stream, but we're not asking the City of Independence itself to issue those bonds. We'd like to work with your staff team and determine whether the IDA might be a good solution, or we'll find another issuer, but we're importantly not asking the City of Independence themselves to issue bonds for the projects, but we would like the permission to do bonds for the project, which we need from the city. Again, this aligns with the economic development policy of the city, both with respect to the percentage of the project being funded by TIF and the percentage of TIF pilots, TIF eats, et cetera. So, we're in alignment with the city policy, the economic development policy. This project will result in $1 million becoming available for the project on 23rd Street, both at our project but well west, well east of our project that's going to work on sidewalks and redoing the streetscape along 23rd Street. The project will create $1 million worth of funding to be the city's matching funds for that project, and we're excited to be a part of that. I touched on this already, but it's worthy of reiterating. This maintains tax revenues to the city in the worst-case scenario, and it's a sharing of the tax revenue above and beyond the base taxes. With respect to the percentage of the project that's being funded, less than 8% of the costs of the project will be reimbursed from the use of TIF, and that's well below the 15% to 20% range that's shown in the economic development policy. When we come back, this, of course, is...this is a first step for us to get started along a process for you all to evaluate whether you'd like to partner with Tri-Land and go through the TIF, TDD, CID processes. When we come back to you in a couple of months requesting actual action of these items, at that point, you'll hear from your own advisors, your legal counsel, your financial advisors. They'll look at the plan that we've developed, the numbers that we've developed, make sure they're fully vetted, and you'll hear from them directly as opposed to hearing from us, whether they believe the numbers and whether they think they're reasonable estimates of how the redevelopment will occur. So, you'll have the benefit of that when we come back in a couple of months. We're really excited to invest these funds into the Hub Shopping Center. This investment's been needed for a while. As Rich mentioned, we think this project, like Cherokee South, for example, and Overland Park, will put this shopping center on a trajectory to be stabilized for many decades into the future, but it needs some reinvestment. It needs some reinvigoration to make that happen, and we hope we've presented a balanced proposal here with respect to the use of these special districts and TIF in the project. Of the $12 million gap, TIF only makes up about 2.6 million of that $12 million gap. All the rest, over $9 million, comes from the CID and the TDD, and we think that overall, when you all have a chance to look at the TIF plan, review the numbers in full, and review our proposal, we're hopeful that you'll also be excited, as we are, to move forward with the project. So, with that, not only is Rich here, members of my team are here as well that have assisted with the financial analysis. We have our legal counsel, Dave Francé. We welcome your questions, and then we can talk about next steps in the process, Mayor, when you're ready for that.
Mr. Mayor? I actually have several questions. When you say reposition the Burger King, can you explain more on that?
So, the Burger King now, that building is plus or minus 40 years old, and it sits on the very, excuse me, east end of the property, set back on east, right along Hub Drive, where the Hub Drive meets 23rd Street. That building will be demolished. The building will be built to the west, and where it sits now will become a parking lot.
Okay. Right now, it currently has a Department of Revenue, where you go get your vehicle license, and a Highway Patrol, where you go take tests. Are those going to stay or are they going to go?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Right now, it currently has a Highway Patrol office there where you can take driver's tests, and it has a Department of Revenue where you get your license. Are those staying or going?
At the moment, they're staying, yes.
This is more probably for the city manager, but we recently discussed doing a CID on that property anyway, and using the funds for the Justice Center, potential Justice Center. How would this affect that?
We wouldn't be able to incorporate this project into that, but we feel confident, council member, that we've identified some other funding opportunities that the CID is not a first or preferred tool for that project. We think it's better applied for the redevelopment of this center.
And what about with the QuickTrip going in there and then all this redevelopment? It's obviously going to increase the traffic in and out of there off of 23rd Street. Are we going to do anything to help alleviate that? Any changes?
Well, we'll have to do some traffic studies as part of all of the redevelopment of that. That's going to be one of the requirements, and that will then point to what, if any of those realignments or modifications, will have to be made.
Okay. One last question. Price Chopper just made a huge investment, or I'm guessing it's a huge investment, putting where they have the barriers, where their parts don't leave the parking lot? You know, how's that going to affect this? Does anybody know?
It will be...right now, the wheels lock. They put an electronic device in there where they lock the wheels so that they can't come off the parking lot. Obviously, during construction, that won't be there, but after construction, it'll go right back in.
And all these...who actually...do you guys own that shopping center?
We do. We bought the center in February of 2022.
Okay, so you...
About a year.
Okay. And all these businesses, I mean, they're on board with this? I mean, Burger King...
Specifically, the Price Chopper store is who we've been dealing with since they're the anchor tenant.
I mean, what about Burger King?
They're on a shore...Burger King, we're also working with. We're also working with Advanced Auto. So, what I didn't explain in the brief presentation is the Advanced Auto Store tentatively going to go into one of the out parcels, and Price Chopper's lease today has only about...got two years to go on the lease. So, they're going to sign a new 20-year lease, and that letter of intent with them should be signed over the next two weeks.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Proceed.
As any of these projects, the most important question we have to ask is, what if things don't work out? So, you struggle to bring in new tenants, or the Price Chopper has more difficulty attracting clients after they've been closed for a while? What is the injury or risk to the city?
Okay. Well, first of all, nobody's going to close while it's under construction. Price Chopper will remain open, as will the rest of the tenants remain open, other than Burger King when we knock it down and reposition it. As it relates to if things don't work out, currently, the reason we buy these types of properties is because there's existing cash flow in there now. When the Price Chopper signs a new lease with us for 20 years, and the other tenants all have reasonably sized leases, anywhere from seven- to 10-year leases, a couple of them are turning over, specifically when you asked about the Licensing Bureau, the driver's license. Those properties, those tenants are in negotiations right now with us, as is the UPS store. So, the short answer to your question is, anything can happen as it relates to an economic difficulty, but we're not demolishing anything that currently produces income. We're only demolishing a part of the Price Chopper store that doesn't produce income at the moment. So, the same income stream that would be there now will be there in the future, and then we build on top of that. So, the short answer is, anything can happen, but the risk here, there's more upside potential than downside risk, given the way the leases are drafted on the property.
May I also...
Sure.
With respect to the public incentives, I want to directly answer your question as well. So, we're asking for reimbursement of $12 million of our project costs. We have to demonstrate to bondholders who will eventually purchase these bonds that we have a good plan, that we have sufficient tenants, sufficient sales being generated, property taxes being generated, that they want to buy a bond of that size. Depending on how quickly the shopping center leases up, we may need to do the bonds in two phases. One, with respect to Price Chopper and some other activity that we know is staying, but we're adding some additional pad sites into the mix as well. We may need to come back and do a second, smaller bond issue. So, importantly, first and foremost, we have to convince bondholders that it's a good risk for them to take with respect to the project. If we're successful in doing that, and we're also successful in explaining the project to our lender, who we have a preliminary commitment with to fund our side, everything, you know, but the $12 million and what we don't provide by equity, we have to convince bondholders and our bank and our equity providers that this is a good project. We have to assemble all that money at the front end before we proceed forward with major work on the redevelopment of the shopping center. If things then do not go as planned, despite, you know, our best efforts to reasonably estimate how the property taxes and sales taxes will react to a redeveloped center, then the bondholders are at risk of not having sufficient funds to either repay a portion of their interest or principal on the bonds. But importantly, the city makes the tools available. As the revenues come in, their responsibility is simply whatever those revenues are, transfer them to the bond trustee. The city's responsibility at that point is over. If the revenues are as expected, great. If they're higher, the bonds will pay off early. If they're lower, that's a risk that the bondholders face and not that the city faces in any way.
And I know you said this, and I'm just going to repeat it out loud so that I make sure that I have complete understanding. The city is not on the hook for the financing. The city does not own the land, and the city is not issuing any debt on this project.
Those are all correct.
Okay. And you, of course, would be in the position of attracting tenants to the new spaces that you are building, so that is your responsibility. And can you just talk about your history of doing that in the past?
So, as I said before, we've done about 50 of these projects throughout the Midwest, and primarily with supermarket chains. So, the various supermarkets that I mentioned up there, we probably do two deals a year, depending upon which part of the country we're in. We're primarily focused now in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and here in Kansas City. So, the major food chain up there is Cub Supermarkets, but we have a full leasing staff, and we avail ourselves of all the big leasing companies that are out there representing various tenants. There's quite a bit of demand here in Independence, and I would like to just focus back on the Oak Street Health tenant. That tenant came to this shopping center, the way it looked and the way it looks today, while we were under contract. So, we actually had to move our price because the sellers brought them to us, and so we decided that it was the right move to put them into the project and did that. But our leasing staff...leasing has not been an issue. When leasing becomes difficult, like when '08 occurred, 2008, then it's anybody's guess what could happen with those kind of situations. But leasing has been robust out here, and we've been in Kansas City, so we know a lot about who's moving around the metropolitan area, both on the Missouri side and the Kansas side, in terms of new tenants or tenants that want to reposition here in Independence.
Thank you. Thank you. And may I ask?
Please proceed.
Question for the city manager?
Sure.
So we have the opportunity for an independent legal review and a financial review to be sure that these are advantageous to the city so that we don't end up in a bad position in the future. I just want to be sure that I understand that as the next piece.
Yes, and to be clear, we have been having those conversations with our bond counsel along the way at Gilmore Bell, but as final proposals are submitted and this project were to progress towards the next steps in the review process, that next step being the TIF Commission, of course, we would have all of that due diligence completed in its finality to make certain of the points you're making.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
Thank you. Two questions. Just want that commitment about our, the labor that is in our city, that they be given a seat at the table to be able to understand and bid on the work, since that is important to this community?
No, I think that's right. So we had met with Mike earlier in the, earlier in the day, since this is in his district, and that is one of the questions he asked, would we avail ourselves of, obviously, the local labor force that's here? And of course, we would. We're part of the neighborhood and trying to create, you know, a lynch into the neighborhood, so that becomes just part of the overall plan and we're fully committed to that.
And I just wanted you to say that.
That's okay.
For everybody listening tonight. And then also, when we talk about materials that will be purchased, if there's ways that we can utilize local companies that can supply material and goods to the project, will they be given an opportunity to do so?
Yes, I think that the, it's in our best interest to do that. If you can have local purveyors of any type of building materials that close to the site, usually you can, you can buy that material effectively.
And I, I'm glad to hear you say that. I think that our local businesses need to hear you say that and that they have that opportunity to be involved.
We're here because we want to become part of the neighborhood and that certainly is a lynchpin to making sure that occurs. So happy to do that.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just, first of all, I appreciate the other questions. I think most of my questions have been answered with those. I appreciate the history of the work that you've done in other places and that you've been successful in those places. I, and I appreciate you having Mr. Francine with us, fellow scouter. I appreciate, appreciate that. One question I had was on the Twenty-Third Street piece of the puzzle. So if you could talk a little bit more about that, and I'm a little interested as to how that might work, given that both Twenty-Third Street, Two-Ninety-One are both, you know, Missouri highways and not, we have really very little control over those and so I'm interested in that.
Yeah, do you want to take a run at that? So with Twenty-Third Street, Two-Ninety-One, when QuickTrip went in, our traffic engineers worked with MoDOT traffic engineers, obviously because that's MoDOT right-of-way. So we work together with MoDOT all the time. Is that your question?
I just didn't know what the one million was going to do there.
Sure. So there's a, there's a concept project we've not yet submitted for, but it would be a kind of like a Twenty-Third Street, complete streets project essentially, which would include sidewalks from about Lee Summit Road beyond the intersection of Two-Ninety-One, which sidewalks, if you ever drive that road, you see a lot of people walking on the street or on the grass. So connectivity along that corridor is very important as well as to this project. So that contribution is the cost share that we would need to make for that project if we were to submit for any funding, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that money otherwise.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I forgot one question, which was, what happens to the Advanced Auto Zone building that gets sold to someone else or what happens there?
You mean where they are today?
Yes.
That building is part of what gets demolished. So that gets demolished and a new building is built for them. And there is one thing I forgot to mention today. We have, at the request of the staff, reached out and are going to have a community meeting on March twenty-third at seven PM at the Bethel Church. So the staff has been good enough to give us a list of addresses and that mailing will go out tomorrow so that we can share some of this with, with the local residents.
And just on that note of next steps, so in addition to that public meeting on the Twenty-Third, what we hope to do in about forty-five days is hold a TIF Commission hearing and hopefully out of that TIF Commission hearing, a recommendation to the city council to approve the TIF. Then approximately two weeks later, we would be back to you for first reading to talk about approval of the TIF district, the CID, and a development agreement as well. Good. Anyone else? Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
All right, I'm going to be extremely redundant here, so please, you've got one more?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Councilmember Hobart. Councilmember Hobart, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I joined a little bit late and can you hear me all right?
Yeah, you might want to lean into your microphone just a tad if you could.
I'll crank my volume up a bit, too. Does that help at all?
Hmm, not really, but Meg's working on it over here, so go ahead. I can hear you and I can repeat it.
I appreciate that. Real quickly, based on some of the comments that the presenters made, I'm going, I'd like confirmation that this project is somewhat crucially important to Price Chopper and their remaining in this location. Is that fair to assume?
Yes, councilman. What we're doing is negotiating a new twenty-year lease with McKeever's as we speak. So they won't invest their money and we wouldn't invest ours unless they're going to stay there.
Okay. I also would like confirmation from both, from both the presenters and if our city manager is comfortable also confirming this, and this is for the benefit of our residents, that if the worst was to happen, just to be very perfectly clear, that if something went horribly wrong, that the city is not responsible for any payments on this TIF.
That's an accurate statement. That's absolutely correct.
And Councilmember Hobart and members of the council all agree with the presenter and say it just a slightly different way. The city will not be putting its full faith and credit as backing against these bonds. These will be developer-backed bonds and the city will not have a financial liability associated with them.
Anything else, Councilmember Hobart?
No, thank you very much.
And you actually read my mind, because that was exactly the question I was going to ask and I wanted it repeated for everyone, very loudly and very clearly, that the city is not going to have any responsibility for this if the TIF were to fail or if any part of the project were to fail. That we are basically approving the zoning of it, approving the CID, approving the TIF, all of those. We're approving those so that you can actually have the authority through the state of Missouri to go ahead and offer those, if I understand you correctly. But we have no obligation financially if this were to go south.
That's a hundred percent correct, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? I just think it was very important and Councilmember Hobart, you read my mind and we're on the same page there, absolutely. No other questions? Thank you very much for coming and thank you very much for the interest of spending roughly almost close to forty million dollars in our city, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's one thing that we can add to the State of the City address. All right. The next item is the budget preview and I think you're going to do that. Is that correct, Mr. Walker?
That is correct.
All right. And you've got this planned for two hours and forty-five minutes, is that correct?
That's the over-under.
Okay.
Only in Kansas, of course. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Again, my name is Zach Walker, city manager, and we've reached March. Brackets are about to be busted for basketball, trees and tulips are blossoming, and in my office, that means it is budget season. As we're working on submitting or finalizing a proposal to submit for you in May, really thought it would be helpful to start breaking the budget down into bite-sized, digestible pieces so it's more easy to converse about it, have conversation about it, and help you in your critical role of approving the budget this coming June. So tonight is kind of that first time that we're going to enter the airspace of the budget conversation, talk about where we see this current fiscal year that ends June thirtieth, where that's going to end, if our crystal ball is accurate, and then start to forecast a little bit what's coming ahead for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four presentation. Before I get too far, I want to give all due credit to our budget manager, Melissa Sill. Melissa's over there and should wave her hand, so that's a face you're going to want to get to know, that's somebody you'll want to ask a lot of questions of in the months ahead as you dive into the budget conversation. So thank you, Melissa, for your help with that. So I want to start with a little conversation about our general fund revenues. This is a look at our current revenue picture as of, yeah, 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 get your binoculars out, June thirtieth, or pardon me, January thirty-first of this current year. I will tell you what the bottom-line story here is, and that is that, as I've been saying for several years now, our budget remains challenged by revenue, or maybe said better, a lack thereof. At a very high level, what you could see, if you could see a little bit better on this, is that our franchise fees, our payment in lieu of taxes, or commonly known as pilots, are basically flat over the last five-year period. Our other revenue category, which is things like court fines and permits and business licenses, has slightly declined and only our sales tax revenue has shown growth over the last five-year period. So if you, from five years ago to today, that number cumulatively has grown by about a million dollars. So all told, the budget revenues over the last five-year period remain flat. Go into a little bit more detail about that, and again, we've talked the last several years about the need to diversify our revenue streams. Today, our top three revenue streams represent sixty-six percent of our budget revenues. The challenge with that is that if we begin to experience any volatility in any one of those three areas, it really puts the budget in a precarious place. So diversifying that and making ourselves less reliant on these top three revenue streams has been and remains our, our goal. To talk about some of these in a little more detail with you, that very first line, pilots, which represents about twenty-eight percent of our overall general fund revenues, this is the nine-point-zero-eight percent that all utility customers pay on their water, sewer, and electric usage, the gross receipts off of all of those. The only true growth that we've seen in that number over the last several years has come as a result of the sanitary sewer rate increases, and those were the rate increases that were mandated as part of the federal consent decree to update our sewer systems in line with federal law. Everything else is basically flat. I'm sure many of you have invested in energy-efficient appliances or updates to your homes, and those things are all good, but as we conserve and use less of these resources, that means less gross receipts, which means less revenue flowing to the general fund. The second line on there, the second largest revenue stream, just short of the amount from pilots, is sales tax revenue, twenty-seven-point-eight percent. On the good side, this revenue source has seen a jump of about two-point-six million dollars over the last five years, but as I'm going to show you in more detail momentarily, this is primarily driven by the inflationary economy that we've experienced over the last twelve to eighteen months and probably likely going to see a decline as that, you know, much forecast recessionary economy starts to set in. Franchise fees, these are fees that are assessed against any utility that operates in the public right-of-way, so cable companies, telephone companies, the gas company are the primary users of that. Many of us, I believe, have reduced in our homes having a landline, primarily using our cell phones as our primary phone numbers, so we are not assessing a franchise fee on cell phones. More transition to that means less revenue off of franchise fees for the phone. And similarly, many of us have cut the cord on cable and are using streaming services and we're not collecting any revenue off of that either. So again, really, the, the gas tax is the primary driver of that, but that can be very volatile. When we have warmer summers, pardon me, winters, warmer winters, that number declines. When we have colder winters, that number will tend to skyrocket. So forecasting that year-to-year is a very difficult exercise. And then finally, I just want to point out again, some of the volatility associated with this and make a connection between prior conversations that we've had. Court fines and fees are lower down on this list, representing only about three percent of our general fund revenues, but over the last several years, the last five years to be specific, this revenue stream has seen a one-point-six million dollar reduction, which is a result of the municipal court reform associated with Senate Bill Five that you heard a presentation on a few weeks ago. So now I want to show you a comparison of some of our tax levies here in the city compared to some of our peer cities around us. I'm often asked by people around the community or even some of our elected officials, how come Independence doesn't seem to be as developed or well-maintained as some of the other cities around us? And I think it's safe to say, and backed up by this chart, that one of the primary reasons for that is we are not competing with the same resources as some of our peer cities around us. If you look just at the top line, which is Independence, and then the average of the comparative cities below, you'll see that our sales tax rate is less than the surrounding cities on average. Our use tax percentage is less. Our real estate tax, which is the tax on your physical building, you know, commercial business or your home, is substantially less. And Independence, as I think we're all familiar with, does not assess a personal property tax on your vehicle, your boat, your trailers, your tractors, all of those, those things. That was voted on back in the nineteen-seventies to eliminate that in exchange for imposing the one percent local option sales tax, which worked really well for a very long time, but as we've transitioned to an online economy and more and more shopping occurs in the e-space, we derive less revenue from brick-and-mortar stores and then, of course, less for the, the general fund there. So now, let's kind of transition to talking about this current fiscal year, the one that will end here in just a few months, on June the thirtieth. And I do want to add that we were notified just today that this particular budget was recognized with the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which is a very high honor. So congratulations to our finance department for yet another award-winning budget document. As is our constitutional requirement, we submitted to you last year a balanced budget. Assuming everything holds where it's at, and knock on wood, it does, we are forecasting as of today that we will end the year with an extremely modest surplus of ninety-five thousand dollars. It doesn't get much better than that when it comes to forecasting a budget. That's, of course, good news to come in right at budget, considering a lot of unbudgeted items that came up this year, not the least of which was the extreme increase in operations because of the inflationary economy, special elections that were unbudgeted, just things that come up in any fiscal year that were not, you know, on our horizon as we, as we embark on that new year. So coming in right on budget is something we should all be very proud of. I should caution, though, that there are still three and a half months to go until June thirtieth, so whatever good-luck charm you have, please make sure we don't have a late-season snowstorm or a major drop in revenue. or a major drop in revenues that would put a big black eye on that forecast that we've got right now. Now I'm going to begin to talk to you about the 23, '24 budget. This is the one that we will submit to you in May, and you will vote on in June to begin on July 1. And our budget development process begins with an update and a look at our five-year financial forecast. It helps us see how the decisions we're considering and contemplating today are going to affect us two, three, five years down the road. And I'm very pleased to know that many of you as council members are interacting with this tool, utilizing it in your decision-making process. I, just last week, had one of the members of the council ask me if our five-year forecast still looks like a waterslide. And unfortunately, the answer to that is yes. Without drastic changes, we right now are still on a trajectory to deplete our general fund reserves in fiscal year '25, '26, so just about two or three years down the road now. The April study session, I would like to use that time to talk to you a little bit more about some of the headwinds that seem to contribute to that structural imbalance in the budget. But again, kind of trying to keep all this digestible, we'll stay high-level on that tonight. But we do face a structural imbalance. The recent spike in revenue, we can attribute that to ARPA funds that were in our budget that we all know go away after this year. And revenue is not growing nearly at the rate of expenditures, largely due to inflation. So these are known factors, these are icebergs on the horizon that we know have to be navigated. As we start to zoom in to next fiscal year, and keep in mind, we are still building the base budget, we are still contemplating all of the costs just to maintain what we're doing today. But as of today, it looks like we are forecasted to start the year with a $264,000 deficit. Now, in years past, that number has been much larger, had more zeros tacked on to the end of it. That's a preliminary figure, it could be much worse than that. But I do think it points to some of the benefits that we're seeing with the current economic activity being positive. Collaboratively, through strong fiscal management staff and through strong fiscal policy guidance from, as a council, we have added to our fund balance over the last several years, which is depicted there in the gray line. You can see a slight increase year-over-year in that. But we still never hit that dashed green line, which is the council's 16% reserve policy. We continue to, as I said, budget every dollar to be expended. Like again this year, I said, coming in at $95,000. So without having, you know, more revenue than what we're spending, this is going to continue to be a dashed line that we're chasing and not hitting, which is why it's important to bring in more of those revenues to help us not only cover our operations, but add to our reserve fund. As we contemplate next year and the budget, just taking a look at some important economic factors, sales tax is still a critically important part of the Independence economy. Here in Independence, we support a $2.3 billion annual retail economy. Things have been very favorable ever since the pandemic started to lift and people felt safer to move about. I've heard the term revenge spending, meaning we got out and we felt like we could do some of the things we weren't able to. Growth in retail sales has increased by over $111 million compared to a year ago, which is a 5.1% increase. But the growth has begun to slow over the last 12 months. It remains positive. We're forecasting a 4.1% increase as we're building our base budget for the 23, '24 year, based on that three-year rolling average. The current sales tax growth today is about 5.1% over a year ago, based on our actual receipts. We'll continue to update this monthly and monitor. But right now, this remains a strong, healthy, favorable economy that helps support our budget here in the city. In my view, one of the surest ways to continue to build our financial sustainability is to become more driven by data and less on our emotions of things that we believe to be important. And there are two parts really associated with becoming more data-driven. One of those is a longer-term approach by creating a shift in organizational culture to align our action plan with our resources through priority-based budgeting. You know, after all, a budget is a statement of values, so making sure that your resources are aligned with your stated priorities really makes that more than just lip service to the things you say are priorities. So that is something we are beginning to do with our departments. That is a slow turning of the ship, but it is something that we are embarking on. The second and more short-term thing is better analysis of the data that is available to us to help us monitor those economic environments, better predict slowdowns that might be on the horizon, that could mean a loss in revenue, looking at things like business license reports, all the data that we have available to us to start to say, what's on the horizon and what adjustments do we need to make. So I do want to tell you and give very strong credit to Melissa and the finance team that we are transitioning this organization away from doing line-item budgeting to priority-based budgeting, aligning those resources with the council's adopted action plan from earlier this year. Doing that will let us develop a true cost for all of our services in the city and then begin to rate them. Some of those lower priority programs, those are the ones that would be defined as being least in alignment with the strategic plan. But we'll also rate them against some of their basic indexes. And by that, I mean things like how many people do we serve? What is the cost recovery of those programs? What is the demand level for those programs? How reliant are people on the city? Meaning, are we duplicating things that other government entities or the private sector already provides that service? And then, what kind of mandates exist? Are these state or federal mandates? Are they things we've imposed on ourselves? Or are they just things we've started doing without any kind of mandate? So, let me be clear. Reallocating these resources is not going to bring immediate budgetary relief to the organization, but it does shift services and provides resources for the high-performing programs or those that align better with your adopted strategic plan. So that's something I'm very excited about that we're bringing to the organization. Here in a moment, you're going to hear a presentation on 101 of a general obligation bond. I would be remiss if I didn't briefly touch on that discussion before you get a little more detail on that. This chart shows spending across the city, all funds, general fund, utility fund, sales tax funds, all funds. A common concern that I have heard over the years is, can the city afford to do a general obligation bond? We already have too much debt. I would submit to you that we can't afford not to do a general obligation bond if we're going to start to address the basic quality-of-life issues that I know are important to you and have been identified in your action plan. If you look at this chart, debt is 6% of our overall spending in the city, and the vast majority of that is associated with utility debt that has got a dedicated revenue stream in the rates to help pay those off. So you're going to get more detail here in a moment from the finance team about general obligation bond, but I wanted to open your mind that that is a very real possibility that this organization can absorb. And again, we are surrounded by cities that are utilizing this tool. I've shown you this chart before. This is actually a little dated now. As of the November election, Raytown has now approved general obligation bonding to address infrastructure needs in their city. So Blue Springs, Lee Summit, Liberty, Kansas City, and now Raytown. We are literally surrounded. I'll be honest, I didn't call Sugar Creek and ask them if they've got a general obligation bond, so maybe we're safe to the north. But my point stands. All around us, communities are utilizing this tool to improve their services, improve their infrastructure, make their community one that works for its citizens. So I'm going to wrap up. Again, I feel very confident, barring any hex I've just put on myself by saying that, that we are going to end this year right on budget, that we have a manageable issue in front of us for next fiscal year. Of course, we'll have to get to a balanced budget, and then any new programming we want to bring in, we are going to have to find resources within the existing budget to reallocate that. That's not a surplus that we've got to work with, so we'll have to get creative with how we do that. But as we wind down one fiscal year and begin to embark on the next one, just remember, there is no one solution to how we solve this, how we increase the revenue-to-expense ratio, but we can't just cut our way to prosperity. We have to begin to prioritize our services and programs in the city and align our resources to match those value statements that we've made. So I'm excited to be on the journey with you and happy to answer any questions you have tonight.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, I want to make sure I heard something correct. You just answered one question, because I thought you were going to propose a non-balanced budget, and it didn't sound like that is the case. The other question that I had was, I thought I heard you say that you thought the sales and use taxes were going to decrease. I want to make sure I heard that right, because my, and maybe you were talking about the percentage of increase was going to decrease. I'm not exactly sure. I just want to make sure that you don't think we're going to have less revenue in total from those two sources.
The percents that are assessed will remain the same, but we are seeing a slowing of the economy. Now, there is still, when we, when we listen to economists and we read up on some of this stuff, the general consensus that we're hearing is there is still a tremendous amount of cash out in the economy right now. The amount that was infused by the federal government over the last still year still leaves a lot of liquidity, and so spending is still very strong in all manner of sectors across the country. But the overall growth rate is beginning to slow. So, and that was inevitably going to happen. I mean, in January of '22, we were up 11% over January of '21. So that's, that's really not sustainable. That was more indicative of, again, people being able to be mobile and be out and spend and do the things, you know, and businesses were allowed to be open their regular hours and their regular operating standards. So we still think things are very strong. We are budgeting sales tax to increase next year at slightly over 4%, which is, which is very good, very strong. But I just wanted to caution that everything continues to point to a recession. Now, the severity of that is still unknown. So we are just exercising a word of caution that that is probably something that you're going to see in the near term that will begin to see a decline in some of those revenues collected off of sales tax.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I would just ask, and this is for not only this presentation, but, but really, in general, in our study sessions, that if it's at all possible that these presentations could be emailed out early so we can review those and maybe ask a little more intelligent questions, that would be, that would be most helpful.
Point well taken, and be happy to work toward that, sir.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a couple of things. How, how long are we going to be working on this before we're kind of at that final point? What's your team's timeline?
We will have to have this proposal internally finalized in the next 30 to 45 days for lead time on printing the document and getting it to the council. By the charter requirements, I have to present that to you in early May. And it's my desire to meet with all of you early and begin to go through this and discuss and, and kind of go line through line. So I would say within 30 days, we'll start having those more detailed conversations.
And the only reason why I ask is, you know, when you turn a ship this size, and we've talked about this. The last weekend put some scare into some folks within our economy, and rightfully so. I, and you, I'm the one guy that says, you know, you've really buffed up the ball this year, the crystal ball. I'm not as optimistic as you come in, and I appreciate your optimism, by the way. So, but I just want to know, because I think that next 30, 60 days will give us a good indication of some things that are approaching, or maybe are coming, or maybe here. Because we, we don't like to talk about inflation, yet we know we have inflation. We don't like to talk about anything, the R-word, right, the recession word, and we may be headed that direction. I just, I want us to be fluid with those, those projections. You're not going to scare us. It's okay if we need to scale it back, or we need to look at some things in a different light. But I think that your optimism is good. I'll just be the balance with my pessimism over here, and we'll keep moving forward. So I just want to know what our timeline is. That 30, 60 days, I think we're going to know some things.
Yeah, we'll, we will really begin to ramp up those conversations very soon.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else, other questions? Everybody good? Okay. Mr. Walker, thank you very much, appreciate it. The next one is financial update on general obligation bonds overview.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, as I alluded to in my presentation, this is an item that the council has identified in their action plan as wanting further exploration around. Tonight, we thought it would be helpful to introduce the concept and answer some of the frequently asked questions. So Jamie Rouch, who is a finance operations manager in the finance department, actually teaches courses on municipal bonding and debt, is here to give a presentation to you on that. So I will yield to you, Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Jamie Rouch, and I'm going to give you a high-level overview of bonds, 101, basically. And then if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. Okay. Okay, so what is a municipal bond? A municipal bond is basically a loan or a security that's issued by a local government to finance projects, funds, refunding outstanding debt, those kind of things. And it typically finances like infrastructure projects, those kind of things. And we'll get into general obligation here in just a second. The interest income is typically tax-exempt on federal and state, and the tax exemption allows the bond issuers to borrow at a lower rate of interest, which is always appealing to them. Okay, variety of bond types, the general obligation, sales tax revenue, utility revenues, basically, it's general obligation bonds and revenue bonds. The, most bonds are issued with fixed rates, semi-annual interest payments, and annual principal payments for that. Okay, so what we did here tonight is just to show you the flow of funds on the process. So what we have is the bond issuer is the city of Independence, and so those bonds would be sold by an underwriter. That underwriter would get those bonds and sold to the bondholders, and then in turn, the bondholders would turn around, issue those funds to the underwriter, and the underwriter would get those funds back to the city of Independence. And then the city of Independence would turn around and pay the principal and interest on that debt. Okay, the key participants here, city staff, obviously, city staff has to go through and look at all, look at what the needs are. And it's a combination of several departments, and it depends on what the projects are in. But we have to go through and look at and what the needs are, and what the market is doing, and what's going to be beneficial for the city. Also, we have bond counsel. The council is just basically the attorney that manages both bond couns- The counsel is just basically the attorney that manages both bond counsel and the disclosures, and they'll do the official statements, and they'll go through those official statements, and they'll just make sure that those are free of material misstatements, and oftentimes helped us draft those. The financial advisor also can double as the underwriter, and it's just an intermediary between the issuer, the bond issuer, and the bondholders. And then the trustee, the trustees are basically the bank that helps us move that money and get that paid. Okay, so these are GO bonds, which is a general obligation bonds. General obligation debt is different from the revenue, special revenue, and that special revenue has special projects that will typically generate additional revenue that you can use to pay that debt with. General obligation bonds are a little bit different in that you look at the full faith credit and taxing power for the city. So there's not special revenue generated particularly that will go to pay off that debt. The biggest thing for general obligation bonds is that it's usually funding government projects that will specifically serve the public community. And so it's not necessarily the special revenue and those projects generated, but it is the general fund monies that will go and pay that debt and to serve the general public. Okay, so bondholders can seek repayment from all legally available funds, so generally you look at like the property tax or the general fund monies, which is the unrestricted fund. Principal and interest payable from that city's authority to levy property taxes, which is what I just said, and the amount sufficient to pay the principal and interest. And then the courts can compel, in the rare case that those bond payments are not made, the courts can compel the general obligation bond issuers to increase property tax as necessary to make those payments. Okay. And why might a city issue GO bonds, long-term capital projects in excess of cash on hand? So what I like to say is, this helps the fluid of cash, the liquidity of cash, it helps it stay within the city, and it helps us, for those long-term projects, spread those out over time, so that we can maintain that cash flow in the city and have the payments over the life of that project. Maintain our cash reserves in the event that we have a natural occurrence, God forbid a natural disaster, or maybe a pandemic, those kinda things, that we have that, those cash reserves on hand, and we're able to pay that money out over time. And also, it helps to, the intergenerational equity, which is basically the fairness between the generations, to help, like if you had a 50-year project, a bridge that was 50 years, you're spreading that out over the life of that project, so not just here and now has to pay for a bridge that's gonna be utilized for 50 years, those kinda things. And so the, the uses and the limitations, so the general obligation, Missouri municipalities are authorized to issue GO bonds pursuant to the constitution and the statutes. It can be issued for any municipal purpose authorized by the charter, and I did bring a section of the charter here today, and it, it goes on and on, and there's many, many uses for that, and I won't read that today unless you all have questions for that, but it's large in part of infrastructure and those kinda things, so it does give us a wide variety of uses for that. GO debt must not exceed 10% of the city's assessed valuation, and on the very next slide, we took the assessed valuation from the annual comprehensive financial report that was published for '22, and it is about 170 million is 10% of that assessed valuation. Okay? So that's what we could issue if the need be for that. Okay, final maturity, it's a maximum of 20 years. Tax exempt proceeds, so the bond proceeds for this type of obligation has to be used for capital project, can't be used for general maintenance, for repairs, those kinda things. And the state statute dictates that property taxes raised from a debt levy can only be used for the debt payments, in the event that that's something that we needed to do. Okay? And then here again is that slide for the assessed valuation. It's just the total assessed valuation, the 10%, and then 20% of the assessed valuation is the 340 million. Okay? Here is the bond election requirements. In April, it'd be four sevens, which is about 57% voter approval, and about, in August, it's four sevens, November is four sevens, an odd number of years. In August, it's two-thirds, and November, it's two-thirds, and those two-thirds equals about 66%. Okay, so here's the process for that. City council, we pass an ordinance for the bond election. You file the notice of the election, then the bond election is held, and the city council passes the ordinance to authorize the bond issues, and then the city works with the transaction professionals, so we have our underwriters, our bond councils, the legal requirements, and we get all of that together, and we will also have to have a credit rating and go through, whether we use Standard and Poor's or Fitch and those kinda things, and have that rating poll as well. And then we go through that process and close that transaction, and then the real work begins for the project and whatever the need is there. Okay, I know that was a very brief overview, but if you all have questions, hopefully I can help you answer those.
Any questions? Please proceed.
Can you go back to your slide with the two-thirds and the four-sevenths, please?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And so this is the number of people who have to vote, not the council, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
These go-to public votes?
Yes.
And you are required in different years to have a different majority approve your bonds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. What is our current bond rating?
For, they're rated differently for different bonds. So, and typically, general obligation bonds has a higher credit rating, simply because it's a very low risk to the bondholders, so they, they take a lower risk, but they also take a lower interest rate, because it's a, it's a much cheaper way to issue bonds for the city. It's a lot lower interest for us, but it's a lower risk for them, so they have to decide, am I gonna take a lower interest, or am I gonna be safe and take a lower risk?
And, and you quickly mentioned something about debt repayment and property tax, and that whizzed right by me, so can you help me with that?
Yes, certainly. So, in the event that something happens and the bonds go into some type of a default, or the bondholders are not getting paid, and that's rare from general obligation debt, but in the event that it does, the court can compel the GO bond issuers to increase property taxes to make sure that that debt gets paid. So it's general obligation says that they can go through, and those bonds have to be paid from any legally resource that the city has, so sales tax, property tax, those kinda things. And so in the event that they went into a default, they could cause that to happen.
And there's a lot of activity in Jefferson City right now to limit property tax, to change the percent that it can increase, to exempt certain things from property tax. How do those two competing items work?
Well, some of what I know going on in Jefferson City is to like, limit the sales tax cap to, I believe, 12% and those kinda things. I haven't followed it for about the last year about what's happening as of right now, but I know that there's a grandfather clause in, so y'all aren't at the 12% yet, I don't believe, so I think you would be okay in that instance. But the other ones I don't know about, but I can find out and get you an answer.
Thank you, very much.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Other questions? Okay, seeing none, that will, thank you very much for that presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. That'll take us to staff reports on audio/video retention, and you've actually got a handout for us too, right?
I do, so, there was a memo attached to the item in Novus, but I've also provided council an updated memo for the audio/video retention, so if you'd like, we can go through each question line by line, or if you've already reviewed the memo, we can just take questions from there, it's whatever your preference is.
What's the preference of the council, just to... I mean, I've read it, so it's already good. Councilmember, I know you asked questions during the council meeting, so I don't know if you have any questions to see to clarify on this.
Yeah, I just, I just had a, actually, a question. Are we paying for, are we paying for the storage, like, offsite somewhere, or we, do we have our own hardware, Mr. City Manager, to do this?
For, for the police department, is that the one you're referencing?
For any of the storage.
Probably the best one to reference would be the police department, that's the primary component, and so I may ask the...
Good evening, Councilman Jason Newkirk, City Manager for the Department of Public and Public Security. Yeah, we're not terribly concerned with offsite storage related to the video, it's all office.
So anything we upgrade would be ours that we upgrade? That's what the cost is associated with?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, just a comment, I think we need to extend it to at least 60 days, and that's my only comment, so, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please proceed.
So in the memo, it discusses unstructured data hardware expansion. What does unstructured mean?
Basically, that's just referring to the audio and video.
Okay, and right now, some of the information that we keep is dash cams from police, making sure that, I understand the dash cams are on, on police vehicles. We keep those for 30 days, and then we have a variety of other cameras at the police station and IPL, et cetera, and so the majority of those would be for theft, destruction, where you would know relatively rapidly what it is that we would need to intervene on. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, it's probably a security.
Okay. And comparatively, the amount of data you're getting from dash cams versus everything else, is it 50%? Dash cam?
No, I didn't think you, but I would imagine it's probably a little bit of security cameras, just because we have a lot more of this.
And do we know, have we had requests?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Mr. Newkirk is not, his voice is not coming through at all on the recording or being projected.
Yeah, may, may just turn the mic on for me.
Did you hear the answer to that?
My apologies, councilmember, McCandless, my apologies.
Okay. So I would be interested, from the city clerk, have we gotten requests for any of these visual or audio files?
We often get requests for dash cam videos, but as far as security videos, I can't, I can't think of an instance where we've received one recently.
And so do you have any kind of estimate on cost? What, if we talk about increasing our time from 30 days to 60 days, and we're buying server space?
Sure.
What do we think that costs?
Yeah, so, so in, in terms of today, so whenever we purchased the existing hardware that we had, we, we planned out for that hardware to last approximately seven years based on what other entities, other government agencies within our space kinda see that growth occur. So when we planned it out, two years ago, when we put those in place, we would have five years of expansion left. If we expand it today, so we won't have to purchase anything today, but what we're gonna do is shorten the lifespan of that server space, and so ba- basically, we're gonna have to purchase something a little sooner than we expected. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm getting at scope.
Yes.
So, is this $10,000? Is this $500 million?
Right.
Give me a range.
Right, so, so, so the, 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 the next thing that we would have to purchase in the future, four years down the road, in today's cost, that's all I can give you, right, is about 70, $80,000, somewhere right around there.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So when we look down here and, and we see that Lee Summit's 60 to 90, Green Valley's 90, Grand View just wants to keep forever, looks like 45 to 365 days, what, what, what's the disparity between 60 and 90, do we know? What are they keeping longer, what are they not keeping as long?
So, for example, the City of Lee Summit, they're the ones that gave me the most information. So as far as like dash cam goes, it depends on whether or not there was contact or no contact for the 60 days. It seems like on average, most of the things that they were keeping were in that 60-day range. I can pull it up here. There were like a few things that they kept for 90 days, but it wasn't anything too substantial. Just a second.
Okay. While you're looking at that, I, I was curious too, and Chief, I'm glad you came up here, because I, it was gonna be directed at you. License plate readers, are we doing that? And, and how many do we have? And how much storage do you need, and how long would you like to keep these license plates rolling around our city?
Well, I'm glad you asked, councilmember. Adam Dussman, chief of police, before I answer, if you'll indulge me for just a second, I wanna provide a little bit of clarification on, since a lot of the intrigue is around dash cams, just to clarify for the council's benefit. So currently, the way we retain, and more towards Councilmember Stewart, if the perception is that all dash cams are lumped into, everything gets retained for a certain period, that is not the way we operate, that's not the way the software operates. So the only things that are, that are written over or not retained for longer than 30 days are things that we do not tag. The tag would be any significant event, so a major crime scene, a homicide, a police pursuit, a DWI, any of those things are tagged and retained, and we actually have internal backups of those that are retained indefinitely in, in some cases, depending on what the, the nature of the investigation is. So I just wanted to clarify for your, your benefit, the only dash cam footage that would be written over or released in that 30-day window is stuff that is not tagged, there were no, no significant events. It could be a citation that was issued with, with no, no incident whatsoever to the public or the police department. Similarly, from the security footage standards, high liability areas, detention, for example, we keep for a longer period, that 45 to somewhere of 60-day period for that exact purpose, just for liability, just to make sure we could go back and look at those things. And again, we retain those. If there is an incident under that same software platform, we tag that incident, and we retain it for as long as may, there may be litigation or anything like that. So just for the council's benefit. Specifically to Councilmember Steinmeier's point, yes, we have LPRs, we have fixed LPRs through the, the cooperative and collaborative effort from the Police Foundation and the Nolan Road CID that I spoke to the council on. Previously, there are 44 cameras that are fixed between, along Nolan Road, between 40 Highway and Truman Road. We are still working out some software bugs, but they are up and running, they are collecting data. Unfortunately, right now, there's a firewall and other issue between the two communicating, so once that internal storage fills up, it then dumps the camera, so we're not able to retain that. So we're working on that to get that going, and also pursuing some grant funds to get a broader net of those LPRs. However, for retention periods, our policy is drafted for the LPR system would retain that for 365 days. So every year, that, that data would, would, unless it's specifically tagged for an investigative purpose, so we get a, we have a homicide that goes out, and we, we track that offender using that LPR query, we would retain that information for court purposes and other things that we would need to do for a longer period of time. All the other non- incidental data that is there, license plates and gatherings, would be written over every one, or every one year, 365 days.
Okay. So with all the technology that, that is kind of being developed and incorporated into your business, is this something, do you think we're gonna require more storage And I don't know if it's two years, five years, 10 years, but there's, there's obviously more, that, that technology's gonna demand it at some point. Not that I'm against any of it, I'm just, I'm saying for the city, as we plan, is it, is this something that we should be planning for, maybe not this year, but maybe next year, a year down the road? It sounds to me like we're limited, we can only do so many days right now without getting ourselves into a bunch of expense, but that expense is gonna come. Is that, is that right, and both of you can...
So there's a fixed expense, and I'm, I'm gonna defer to the, the tech wizard here in a second, but through Jason and his incredible team, one of the things that you will be familiar with when I presented on the body camera program, which you're gonna see again here as we prepare and apply for that grant, they have come up with a really, really comprehensive strategy that would keep onsite storage within the confines that we have. Yes, we would have a one-time expense to build out some server space to be able to, to accomplish and, and store locally for a period of time, and then there's a transition between 30-day data, 60-day data, and then in the, the wonderful sphere of, of technology, you're seeing everything go... sphere of, of technology, you're seeing everything go cloud-based for more of the long-term storage. And so that is that comprehensive strategy that they put forward for us going forward. So we would have maintenance costs and subscriber fees for the cloud-based storage, but the likelihood that we would need to recall that data is few and far between compared to what we would have in that initial 30 to 60-day window.
Yeah, and to just expand on that a little bit, I mean, that, that's why we, we planned out a seven-year plan when we initially put this in place. And so, yeah, today, like I said, we, we have excess capacity because we planned on that excess capacity. And we, we planned on a certain amount of growth, you know, based on our existing retention practices and things like that. And so that's why, kind of why we're talking about this today, and why there would be no additional cost today to expand that 60 days. But I just wanted to make it clear that there, there is, is a cost down the road, just because you're not spending money today.
And that, and that's all I'm asking, not to put you on the hot spot, but it is something that, let's face it, I mean, it's going to require more and more. As the city grows?
Sure.
We're going to have more demand for it as well. So it's just something that if you can keep us informed about, if we're putting too much demand on the storage that we have available, then we need to know what we need to do to expand it, and to keep our city safe, and to keep our information safe, and to keep all the data safe.
Sure.
Okay. Please proceed.
Is it possible that we kind of split the baby here and do a six-month trial of saying we keep our data for 60 days, as Councilmember Stewart says, but really look at that and say, okay, did we interrogate it more often? Were there more calls on it for the 60 days? And at the end of that period, saying, is this the best policy at what cost? We can always change our policy back to a 30-day retention, which will save some of our server space. I think we have the opportunity to learn from our own information and, and make a decision that does not cost us for the long term for a decision that we make today.
Sure. I mean, I was going to say, no, that, that, that sounds like something that a city clerk could probably address.
Yeah, I think that's a, a potential. I know I've been talking with staff a little bit, and one of the suggestions was, since the primary thing here, it seems, are like the police records, the security cameras from like the other departments, like IPL, parks wrecking tourism, maybe keeping those at the 30-day retention and giving the police records the 60-day retention to kind of have a nice balance there. I mean, ultimately, it would be up to the council. If it's your desire to have everything for 60 days, then we can, we can move down that path, but the greater value would most likely be in terms of keeping the police records longer, and then still allowing everything else under that general retention code to be at the 30 days.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just, maybe it was said and I missed it, but are we getting requests beyond the 30 days that we're not able to fulfill? Or are we, I mean, if, if we're not, then I'm not sure why we need to change, but that's just my...
I haven't received a request recently that we haven't been able to fulfill, even like for dash cam, for example. I mean, most of the time, it's not someone asking for dash cam from 30 days ago, it's someone asking for, for dash cam two years ago or six months ago. So either way, I mean, if you moved it up to the 60 days, that's not necessarily what we're encompassing with those records requests where we're not able to fulfill them. It's a much longer time that there, the time has elapsed in order to be able to fulfill that request.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
How many security cameras do we have in total? Do you have any idea?
So, I mean, I would say... We have probably upwards of 50 easily, just within the police mainframe, just different areas. I mean, that encompasses the bus stop that we look over, the room that you're sitting in right now, that we have in case there was trouble, we can look in and see all the different cameras that are around, and we can dispatch appropriately. So that, that's 50 different areas, but there are hundreds of cameras, if you think about all the different cameras and views in the police building itself.
How, how are they configured? Are they configured to record 24/7, 365, or are they configured to only start recording when they pick up motion?
They record 24/7.
Okay. I mean, would it be possible to save space to maybe the more non-essential cameras to configure them where they only start recording when they pick up motion? Or is that...
I'm, I'm sure that's probably a configuration. My worry for that would be what happens if, for whatever reason, the motion sensor doesn't pick up, and something were to happen in one of those areas that we need to capture for record keeper or investigatory purposes, and we weren't able to capture that. So I, I think just because we are a 24/7 operation and the liability that, that corresponds with our, our operation, the 24/7 recording is, is the responsible way to go.
I guess I was referring more to this building, you know? I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know where all the cameras are, I haven't walked around and looked, but, you know, I mean, there's one in some hallway somewhere that, you know, I mean, if it's recording 24/7, you know, I mean, why not just do it when it does motion? I don't know, that's just a thought. That's all I have. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Any further questions? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and that takes us to boards, commissions, and reports, if I'm correct.
Okay, so the only board that we're looking to add a resolution to, it would be the first meeting in April, would be Tourism Commission, and that's Jeff McLaughlin. If there's no objections, we'll get a resolution added to that first meeting in April to a point.
Okay. Any other questions, or is that all you have then?
I have a few more things that, just friendly reminder, so Industrial Development Authority, we're, we have a vacancy on that, so we're looking for recommendations. I went through applications today, and we have zero. So if the council has any suggestions on applicants for that, we would be happy to have people apply. And then Board of Legalization, we're in the same boat with that, no applications on file, and we do have that one vacancy that we do need to fill, that's the regular membership for that board. So again, any suggestions, we're happy to take in those applications. And then my final item is the Economic Development Partnership. At our last study session, Councilmember Fears said that he'd be happy to serve on that board. We're still looking for one additional council member to serve on that board.
Okay.
So if there's any, anyone who's interested?
Okay.
Let me know.
Perfect. Anything else? Anything else, City Manager?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. With that being done, we'll go ahead and conclude this meeting, and we'll call it adjourned. Thank you very much.